21st, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting to Order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City of Bothell is now providing the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the agenda. A call-in phone number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. For our study session item, we will recess and move to Conference Room 107, that way, and adjourn the meeting from there. For those of you in the audience, Room 107 has some seating for the public. However, we will also continue to broadcast it in both council chambers and the lobby. For virtual attendees, because Rooms 107 is Teams-enabled, you will need to use the Teams link provided on the first page of the agenda. As a reminder, you can also watch the meeting on YouTube or VCTV without having to break your connection. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please stay here when the City Clerk calls your name.
Thank you. Councilmember Zornz?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil?
I feel like we should just like have me do a recording.
Councilmember Menke?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Here.
All present with the exception of Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently, and mute your microphone when not speaking. Moving on to meeting agenda approval, are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to presentations, reports, and briefings, and public engagement Saturday, March 25th, at 10:00 a.m., you can save the date and join the City of Bothell in celebrating the completion of Bothell's newest fire headquarters, Fire Station 42. You can, I'm not going to read the website anymore. I just decided that. But there's a website. You can go there. We have Save the Date for Coffee with a Cop, Saturday, March 25th, from 12 to 2:00. So you can go from one to the other. You can join Bothell Police this Saturday for Coffee with a Cop, taking place at the Canyon Park Starbucks right next to Wafer Bank. And you can give blood. I know that those levels are really low right now. So March 27th to 28th, make a life-saving difference, and join us at Bothell City Hall for our March 27th and 28th blood drive. And the link is right there. Thank you. All right. Moving on to City Manager Report. Deputy City Manager Tony Call.
Thank you, Mayor. The Deputy City Manager does not have a report tonight, so I'll turn that back to you.
Fantastic. Council Committee Reports. Councilmembers Zornz?
I have a couple. One is LTAC. They're working the budget for bringing street sense people to talk with council, because council had asked for that. So wanted to let you know that's still being tracked. And then the other one is RIAA8, and I have a fellow stormwater nerd that, at least I think I do, that I think that you will find this exciting. Well, yes and no exciting. We were talking about stormwater problems for our watershed, and we have 118 billion gallons of polluted stormwater that's untreated that goes into Puget Sound. And so one thing that RIAA8 is talking about is gearing up for treating stormwater. And there is something called, let's see, I'll get you the whole name of it. It is storm, it's like a, sorry, hang on a second. It is stormwater treating parks, and their goal is to create 30 of them to treat 100 miles of road. So if we're trying to, and the goal is to, I was thinking, what is it called? 6PDDQ? What are the tire dust?
Tire dust.
Yeah. The tire dust that comes off roadways. And I sat there and I thought about 522 wrapping around Bothell, you know, Park at Bothell Landing and Wayne. And so I'm thinking, if they are providing grants for 30 of them, and I think the other one is 3,000 rain gardens that will help kind of filter that as well, I thought Bothell would be a ripe candidate. And our fence, so I brought that question up. How would we go about getting a grant? Well, popped up in my message that Janet has already put in for grant requests for stormwater park at Wayne and possibly at the Park of Bothell Landing. So we have such fantastic, fantastic staff. Give Janet a big hug for us next time you see her, but I thought you would enjoy hearing that. And if you're interested in what these stormwater parks look like, it's called Manchester Stormwater Park, and that is on the Kitsap Peninsula. And I found it fascinating to watch the video of what those actually look like. So that's my report.
All right. Seeing nobody else, I'll move on to visitor comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the City Clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but upon the advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make notes of items requiring follow-up. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. We did not receive any written comment for this evening, but we do have two people signed up to speak. The first one is Mark Swanson. And I will say while you're making your way up there, we will set the timer for three minutes, and it will start blinking at 30 seconds yellow. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, members of the staff, good evening. I speak for thousands upon thousands of Bothell residents that have no voice in these proceedings. Thousands upon thousands. How many of you knew that Redmond, the first name for that place, was salmonberg? It had so many cutthroat and salmon that you could walk across the Sumamish. Despite heroic efforts, one of the Kokoni DNA salmon, unique to Sumamish Lake, is now extinct, as of two years ago. Gone forever. 10,000 years of DNA history gone. Extinct. Unique. Not recoverable. When I was in Federway in 1966, there were goldfinches everywhere. Strange thing about the goldfinch, it only eats seeds, no insects. And they disappeared. By 1991, the goldfinches were gone. One of the things I loved about Bothell, they had goldfinches here. Last time I saw a goldfinch at Bothell Landing was 15 years ago. I was lucky. My house was custom-built by the Safeway manager of the old Safeway back in 1977. It's nestled amongst some trees. I got Oregon grapes, salal. I've never had a lawnmower. I got 22 conifers, full grown, which makes me carbon negative. I spent 25 years here, never saw a deer on the city streets, never saw a deer ever in my neighborhood. The last three years, I've seen deer and fawns all over the place about right now. Two years ago, because I have nothing but salal and ferns and rhododendrons that I planted, I caught a doe with her fawn sleeping in my backyard on an R84 parcel. What have you people done? I have mountain beaver, have the barred owl. One thing that's not in danger is crows. I've got thousands and thousands and thousands of crows flying over my house. The only domestic cats in my neighborhood anymore are black, because the bobcats and the coyotes got the rest. What have you done? The green tree frogs, after tonight's meeting, go step out. They're singing, but they're less loud now, and I got to hand it to Councilman Zornz. This rain garden business is no joke. It should be in the comprehensive plan, because the GMA does not talk about environment.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mike Milligan, who's joining us virtually. Hello, Mr. Milligan. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I hope you can hear me. You've been cutting in and out on the internet, so I'll try to get through this fairly quickly. But thank you, Mayor Thompson and the city council members, for allowing me an opportunity to address you here. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. My name is Mike Milligan, and I'm representing Chantilly Thai Restaurant at 10107 Main Street. We've been there for over 20 years. The ownership has been there for over 20 years, Julie Chantilly. And I wanted to take a few moments that allowed it to me to just heighten your awareness around the closure of Main Street, particularly around the impact to our business. I can't speak for other businesses, but I could speak to ours. And certainly, there are adjacent business owners who may have some of the similar concern, particularly as we think about the closure length, the closure frequency, whether it's temporary or not. We kind of remained in the dark on that. And I've worked with the Chamber, I've worked with Economic Development, I've worked with, got a note here from Nancy Bateman, nobody seems to truly be the point person here. But I also just wanted to let you know that we've gotten feedback from our customers, other business owners, that just generate a serious lack of understanding, and I think on both sides. One, obviously, the revenue impact. You may not see that, but I'm happy to open the books to show you that. We have not recovered from the pandemic. Closure of Main Street right now is discouraging future investment, at least on our part. There are several unintended impacts, ADA issues, fire truck access, parking lot misuse, the restaurant, our restaurant being used as a pass-through and to get to Main Street and as a public restroom facility. We've not been, we've not prepared for that. But the reason why I'm here is to invite you, Mr. Mayor, and the city council to come out and perhaps have a town hall with some of the business owners and perhaps customers who attend or come to Chantilly to get some true feedback as to the impact of what's happening to us today. And again, also, if you want to take a look at the financial, be happy to show you that. We'll host it at the restaurant. I just think gaining some alignment with your tax-paying business owners is really important, and for you to get a surround view of the full body of what the ownership and customers are saying. So I want to thank you for your time. Hope to be there next time in person, but I wanted to, again, heighten your awareness on this issue and invite you out to a town hall with adjacent business owners at Chantilly Restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milligan. That's all I have signed up to speak tonight. However, if anybody's in the audience, please come up to the podium. You'll have three minutes and state your name for the record, please.
Hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. My name is Kristin Joyner, and I've lived and volunteered in this community for 30 years. I'm also the pastor of Community Engagement at Bothell United Methodist Church, a church that has been in this community for 130 years. As a church, we strive to live into our faith by being community and are committed to also meeting those needs that we meet in the community. On May 3rd, 2022, at 4 hours and 22 minutes into your council meeting, you provided some direction to city staff at the Time Director, Michael Cotterman, to move forward on a plan for Lot P, which we have been calling the Bothell Urban Project. The response to the RFP that we submitted on August 17th, 2022, as a result of that meeting, is for indoor community gathering space and outdoor public plaza, restaurant training space, human services offices, 144 affordable rental apartments, and 10 Habitat Townhomes. With patience and grace, we understand the staffing and council changes that have occurred since that time, and we would like to continue moving forward with patience and grace as we look at this as a way to partner with the city, not work on opposing sides, like many transactions can be. We see this as a way for the city to invest in the priorities of affordable housing and using community land for community benefit. Working together with our partners, Bridge and Habitat, and our newly forming 501(c)(3) Northwest Community Solutions, this can be a part of your vision and a result of the priorities that you have determined. One of your stated priorities is neighborhoods, and we see this as a much-needed addition to the newly forming downtown neighborhood, where I have heard over 4,000 new residents have the opportunity to live in market-rate apartments. We've had a conversation with Manager Stannert and have been introduced to Director Greenspan, and were able to talk briefly about Bothell Urban. Our city is very fortunate to have these new staffers and their experience onboard. As all community members are encouraged to do, and also because I'm on the Community Advisory Board for Arch, I've recently requested assistance from Arch, Lindsay Masters, and Elsa Kings, to see how to move this project towards, forward, towards success. They've been a part of the conversation since 2018, when we first started talking about this possibility with Manager Phillips. Arch expertise has helped other cities increase their affordable housing, especially projects that are partnered with community organizations and municipalities. Tonight, I'm here to ask the council to prioritize this project and to have staff work with Arch so that we can move forward in a timely manner towards building this community space. You're the seven people that can make this happen. I appreciate your leadership and your time. Thank you.
Pro.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? That's all I have.
Fantastic. City Clerk, did Mr. Milligan leave any contact information when he signed up for public comment?
Yeah, we have his contact.
Could you send that to me, please?
What's that?
Could you send that to me, please?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Next up, projected agenda discussion. Anything on anybody's mind? All right. Liking that, I will accept the motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Dodd?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Alderks to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Menke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Pass the 6-0 with Councilmember McNeil absent and excused.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to our first Agenda Bill of the night, Agenda Bill 23046, Consider Adoption of the City of Bothell 2023 Water System Plan. Deputy City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm glancing in the audience for staff members as they come. Agenda Bill 23046 will be asking council to consider a resolution to adopt the 23 Water System Plan. As you may remember, it was before you last, back in April of 2022, where council did give conditional support pending a Department of Health review. That review has now been completed, and we are here to look for final adoption. So with that, I will turn it over to Boyd Benson, our Utilities and Development Services Manager, to present forward. Yes? Are you good to go, sir?
Yes, ma'am. We're just bringing up the presentation at this moment.
You don't have it memorized, Boyd?
Oh, no, I have that memorized. This just failed. So thank you for your patience. Look at that. Other presentation, please. This is a good one as well.
I think that's the next one. We're looking for the water, the 23 Water Plan.
Yeah. So I can start just with a brief introduction on this. Most of you have seen this plan back last year. The plan has not changed substantially. It has changed very minimally pending the Department of Health review. So now we have this up, so I'll walk you through these slides. Thank you so much. Next slide, please. Regulatory framework. Per RCW, the city must have a water system plan for a Group A provider such as ourselves. This is something that usually is updated every eight years. We last updated our plan in 2012. It became effective 2014. We started this process in 2019, but with the COVID pandemic, we saw some serious shifts in use of water. So we put that on hold. We had this plan submitted to council last year, and then we had conditional approval. We brought it forward to Department of Health. We received our Department of Health approval letter in February, and we're bringing it back for your final consideration. Next slide, please. I'm just going to go through this very briefly, but the components of the system plan are the description, what we serve, how we serve, how we do it, basic planning data, growth projections, what's there, system analysis, how we analyze our system to see that we have sufficient fire storage in our reservoir or peak day demand so we can, we can provide the water we need. Hydraulic analysis, where we look at our system entirely and run a model run to understand how water goes from our reservoirs and our connections through the distribution system. We look at fire flow pressures and the rest. Water use efficiency program, that is just part of the plan that's been there quite a while. There are regulatory requirements to adopt a water system efficiency goal, and that was done last year as well. But it's basically keeping what we're at as with respect to consumption. And at a future date, I'll share a plot from SPU. You can actually see with, with increased populations up till the mid 80s, 90s, you'd see as population increased, water use increased accordingly. But with the conservation goals, even though population increases, the water system per capita is decreasing, so it kind of offsets that impact. Operation and Maintenance Plan, that's how we do our daily business. Capital Improvement Plan, this was used to understand what projects we have to do to keep our system in good health and accommodate growth through the 20-year planning period. We use that input to, as a basis for the adopted 2023-2029 Capital Facilities Plan, so that's taken care of. And then financial analysis. This is a more broad-brush look at where we are now and our costs over time and our rate revenue. And some of that information was used to help prompt or to inform the rate analysis we did last year. And this information will also be used for our upcoming utility rate. And what I should have mentioned is the packet or the attachment, your packet has a lot of redacted sections. We don't put all this out for public consumption. So we had no substantive comments since the last time you'd seen this. We had no revisions from council. We had some really good questions. Utility districts, there were just some minor corrections on describing how we describe their systems and their facilities. For Department of Health, they had comments and they asked us to strengthen some of our monitor testing language. We actually, we do all the work, but they wanted the language strengthened. Wells, we have two wells within the city. They wanted some clarifications of how we use those and the water rights. We took care of that. Then asset management, this is just, it's a requirement per RCW to describe this, and so we just had to add a couple paragraphs of how the city manages our assets. Next slide, please. That's it. So we're recommending approval of the resolution adopting the City of Bothell 2023 Water System Plan. With our approval letter, the next time we'll be submitting these plans is 2033, unless we have significant changes within the city prior to that time. Any questions for staff?
Councilmember Alderks?
This is just a question for clarification. This is updated every eight years? And you said 10 years? Okay, so tell, clarify.
It used to be eight, and now it's 10. Yeah, you're correct.
Okay, so that's a recent change? Okay. Cool. Just making, I might have missed that detail when you said it extended to 10.
No, no, no. I'm used to, a decade ago, and it used to be eight years. So, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmembers Zornz?
I think I ask this question on occasion, and I'm going to ask it again. I have no problems at all with this Agenda Bill. I'm just keenly aware that there is some controversy of adding fluoride to water, because it replaces calcium in your bones and as well as calcium for your teeth. And have you heard any discussion on finding another way to get fluoride treatment into kids' mouths, short of not putting it in our water? Have you heard any conversation at all?
I have not. I don't have much to share on that. What I will say is we purchase our water from SPU, and the fluoridation is done at the treatment plant. So that'll probably continue for a bit sometime.
Yeah, I'm sure it's higher up on the food chain. If people want to make that change, they're going to have to go there. So I was just curious if there was any talk about it, and you're saying no.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And 2033 seems like forever away, and I know it's not.
It doesn't look like anybody else has any other questions. I will happily entertain a motion. Councilmember Dodd?
I move the recommended action.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd, and I have a second from Councilmember Alderks to approve the resolution adopting the City of Bothell 2023 Water System Plan. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Menke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Pass the 6-0 with Councilmember McNeil absent and excused.
Thank you very much, and Boyd, thank you very much. Always a pleasure. All right. Moving on, we have Agenda Bill 23047, Consider Approval of Professional Services Agreement with FCS Group for Completion of the 2023 Rate Update for the Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Utilities. Deputy City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and Boyd will stay here one more time for the next presentation. We are asking tonight to get approval on a contract with FCS to do a comprehensive utility rate update. The last time that was done was back in 2016 and 2017 for the 2018 rates, so it's been several years since we've done a rate update. And before you today is the option to have that rate update continued. So with that, Boyd Benson is here, our Utilities and Development Services Manager, to give a presentation and take any questions.
Your microphone is off.
Thank you, sir. Next slide, please. This action being requested is to authorize the city manager to enter into this professional services agreement for 152,240. I will say upfront that that amount includes a $15,000 program set aside. So if issues come up during the project, or if there are certain policy items that arise, we have some funds to do additional work beyond which is within the scope. Next slide, please. So as mentioned by Deputy City Manager, last time we did this was in 2016. It was a lengthier process, 2016, 2017, and adopted 2018. What was not unique about that, what was special about that is it included a cost-of-service evaluation. And what that is, is we're looking at total revenue required, I'm just going to use water for example, and how that revenue should be collected. So in previous, not the 2016, but in previous iterations with water conservation, and this is two decades ago, well, maybe we should have an escalating rate, where if you use less water, the first 100 cubic feet are charged at this. And if you're a huge, huge water user, maybe this rate is applied. And what it does is it tries to help address water conservation. Or what is the burden with respect to residential and commercial? Well, our fire, our water system's typically designed for fire flow, and that's more commercial in nature. Not every home has a fire sprinkler system. So when you talk about cost of service, you're really looking at the rate classes and what fair share of the burden should they pay, not just purchasing the water, but the rest of the overhead and maintenance. We also, more recently, completed a capital facilities charge update, and this was in 2021, and council adopted that for 2022. And what that was, what does new development need to pay to basically buy into the city system? Rate payers have built this system. It's a really, really good system. And when someone adds additional burden, the facility charge helps make sure that they pay their fair share of buying into the system and funding future projects that accommodate growth. So that was a really good evaluation. And then, of course, we do annual updates as part of the budget, and annual updates, and we look at what's happening with wholesale treatment or cost of living or consumer cost or capital facilities plan. And those are much minor. They're typically staff-led with some consultant support. So the 2016, 2018, and 2021 work was, worked with FCS Group. They know our system very, very well. And for the annual updates, it was staff-led with some support, so they could check our, check our math. Next slide, please. So just a really brief overview of the scope. It's the information we provide. We just received our 2022 year-end expense and revenue from finance, so that's ready to go. It's our newer capital facilities plan, it's our water system plan, project list, it's all those good things. We have scope items in there for policy papers. So this is something that we added to help steer the conversation. So one of those policy papers is identified as missing middle and ADU rates and facility charges, because we know that's something that they'll want to be looked at. So it's more of a, it's not really the rates So it's more of a, it's not really the rate study. It's, hey, this is your, these are your options, and this, these are what other cities are doing, and you might want to consider those. Benchmark analysis, we do this every year, and we just look, what is, what are utility customers in Bothell paying compared to others? Well, the benchmark analysis goes deeper. It's, it's what are they paying per this? Or how many staff members do you have for this many miles of pipe? Or these type of resources? So it's, it's more metric-driven, and so we're very excited about that. Revenue requirement, that's just the CFP in our long-term plan. They'll propagate that out quite a bit. We currently budget over a seven, eight-year period, so we can make sure we do the CFP. They'll look at that. Stormwater rate design, this was brought up in 2016, 2017. We charge residential parcels, one flat fee, whether the size of the home is large or small. And that works very well for the City of Bothell. We charge commercial based on the percent impervious surface and the intensity of that use. Other cities are, and counties are going to different approaches for rates. And once again, this is collected twice a year through your county taxes. Should these be based on actual impervious area of each residential parcel? Should multifamily, maybe, I'm not going to say pay less, but pay their fair share because they're sharing walls and landscape areas? Or should it stay flat? So we'll be looking at that, and that's, that's going to be a very good policy-driven discussion. The water and wastewater cost-of-service analysis, it's, it's pretty much what I discussed before. We really can look at where the big burdens do, is residential affluent to the sewer system more or less of an impact from restaurants and commercial and the rest per unit? And then capital facility charges, we're not asking for the consultant to update the charge per unit. We're asking, how should these be distributed? Is, does an ADU, which is a standalone unit, which may be its own water meter, because that may be required if it's individually owned, should they be paying the one facility charge for that water meter similar to a single-family residential unit? Well, in reality, they may have less demand, so maybe that facility charge could be adjusted. We budgeted for three city council meetings. The first one would be a, like a Rates 101 hosted by FCSG as we do the work, and then finally the documentation. Next slide, please. Policy opportunities, cost-of-service evaluation, this is something that we'll be getting feedback from city council and, and the rest as part of our outreach program. Rate discounts, currently we have provisions for senior and disabled. We'll look at those more closely. The, the, this hasn't been updated for quite some time, so there's some opportunities there. Middle housing and ADUs, we put in parentheses new rate class. Once again, if you pay sewer within the sewer utility area, you pay a flat fee that covers 400 cubic feet of sewage generated in the billing period, and that's based on your water meter. Well, that flat fee is X, let's say $130, which is close to that. Well, if, if an ADU is most likely going to have much less generation, should that flat fee be something different? Maybe it's lower with 100 CCFs as the base fee. So those are the type of things we're looking at. And then affordability as well, that's, that's always a really good subject to look at. Typically, when we speak of affordability in utilities, it's not getting a discount, it's looking for other opportunities to offset lost revenue if there are some provisions to help support affordability. Facility charges, I've already discussed that, and staffing level forecast. This is something that city hasn't done for a while with respect to operations. So staff has been working on the approach and, and some of the metrics over the last year or so, just as a side project, to understand how we get our work done, where we focus our, our staff, and to look at, are we meeting our requirements, our regulatory requirements? Are we doing all the water main flushing or the sewer main inspection we should be doing? So we'll have some of that. And then we're asking FCSG to look at that as well, because there may be, staff levels haven't changed in the last decade, basically, with respect to operations. And as the system grows, we should be accounting for that in our long-term forecasts. We don't want to get to the point where, oh, we can't meet regulatory compliance for stormwater regulations, and we don't have the staff to get there. And then, once again, that project management reserve for 15,000. If something comes up and, hey, we'd really like this rate study, look at this, we have some resources for that. Next slide, which I think might be the last. Anyway, we're requesting that council authorize this agreement in the amount of 152 for the 2023 utility rate update.
I do have a question, but I, I first want to say thank you for thinking about middle housing and ADUs and, and just acknowledging that there are differences in usage that occur. I know that those in our community who are interested in, in building ADUs on their property will really appreciate that you're doing that, so thank you. The next question I have is, I'm becoming accustomed to seeing lists of analysis for policy, usually including an equity analysis as well, and I'm wondering if that is something that factors into or applies in this setting?
That's a really good question. I, I'll have to review the scope to see if it's specifically addressed. When we look at rate classes, equity is kind of built in, and when I think of equity, it's what is your burden on the system? And, and you may find that multifamily has a smaller burden than something that has a swimming pool or irrigation. So that's how I see it as utilities, and that's how we typically see it. But if there's other equity metrics that, that council would like, that's part of that policy discussion at, at the, at the start of this work. So it'd be a great thing to follow up on, to understand exactly what type of equity focus you're.
Yeah, I would, I would be interested to see what FCS factor, like, right? Because they're the ones who are going to be doing the work, and so they would probably have a pretty clear idea of what they were. So I'd be curious to see what they have to say and what they're offering or what they already include. So yeah, thank you for, for taking that back to them.
Will do, thanks.
Councilmember Manke?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question on the sewer charges. Are those not passed on by King County? Do we actually set them ourselves?
That's a very good question. So right now, I believe the, each month we pay, I think it's $54 per connection, and that's a residential connection. And those are the type of discussions that are embedded in this as well, because if, if you have a single-family residential unit with one sewer connection and they add an ADU with their own meter, the city will have to report that usage. And in the past, it's a separate connection with a separate meter, it was one residential connection. So it'd be $54 for that. What we've already discussed with SP, or with, sorry, King County Wastewater Treatment Division is, we're treating these more as multifamily, and, and they're allowing that. So when, in multifamily rates, it's your total water usage is, that's how you calculate your, your impact. So if, if we go to that, and that's part of this discussion on, on rate setting and the rest, because we want to make that abundantly clear. If someone, if someone has an ADU and a residential unit and they share a meter and the rest, well, maybe that should be thought of in a certain way. So we pay for that treatment, they also pay facility charges, and that's something that King County already does implement special programs for duplexes, ADUs, and the rest. So they've gone for facility charges to buy into the system, and this is separate from any City of Bothell permit fees. It's, it's currently around 15,000 per RCE over, I think, 10 or 15 years. They've gone to small, medium, large homes, because that's a proxy for fixture count and, and burden on the system, and they've also gone to ADUs. So it used to be one residential connection equivalency is one, and an ADU is .59. So we're very keen in exploring that for this city's facility charge.
Great. I think that answers my question. I look forward to reading it in the report. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Boyd, as always. I always expect you to come with really cool pictures of clean pipes, but next time, maybe.
Did you see the cool water tank picture?
Oh, I did.
Yeah.
It's not the same as the pipe, though. The one thing I wanted to piggyback on what Councilmember Alderks mentioned, because you did mention in the agenda and you iterated and you reiterated in your presentation about the utility rate discounts programs, I wanted to focus on that. But I assumed within that, you're going to look at it from an equities standpoint, because I understand your, your point is, we, well, we need to have a net positive revenue program. And you look at it, is it fair for some, for two people using the same amount of, to pay, is it fair or not to pay the same rate, right? But there are some people who cannot afford to pay the same rate. So that's looking at it from the consumer standpoint also, and not just from the city's standpoint. I'd love to see the analysis on, from that perspective, which goes along senior disabled affordability. But then there is, last year when we raised the rates, a lot of nonprofits complained. So also, that goes within that discussion. Maybe we can have that as part of the analysis, if that's okay.
May, may I please comment on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to sound cut and dried on that. There are, like, RCW allows us to provide senior and, and some of these rates, and so those are, those are slam dunks. When I, when I say that in utilities, we typically look at equity of burden, it's a very easy thing to demonstrate. This is multifamily with, with many fewer fixtures. We can easily demonstrate that, that the burden is less, and, and so I, I understand the equity lens and, and the rest, but there are some really good ways to attack that. And, and I will fall for FCSG because there's multiple approaches.
Sometimes that for bill is not just multifamily. You could have, be renting a single-family home because you got a voucher or whatever, and then you still have a single-family home yet, you're, you know?
Understood. And that is, that is in the scope.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
So thank you.
I also do not have any more questions for Boyd. If somebody would like to make a motion? Councilmember Alderks?
I motion to approve the recommended action.
All right, we've switched roles. I have a motion from Councilmember Alderks and a second from Councilmember Dodd to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with FCS Group in the amount of 152,240 in substantially the same form as presented for completion of the 2023 rate update for the water, sewer, and stormwater utilities. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember McNeil absent.
Thank you, city clerk, and thank you, Boyd. We were easy on you tonight. All right, next up, we have Agenda Bill 23048, Consideration of ILA for Cooperative Purchasing Between the City of Bothell and Arizona State Co-op. Deputy City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, this evening. Agenda Bill 23048 does ask for your approval to enter an interlocal agreement with the Arizona State for a government-to-government purchasing contract that would allow for several and different types of purchases. Our most pressing need and why this contract is coming to you now is the need for three additional police vehicles, and so that is its most pressing need. So as we start this evening, I will turn it over to Jeff Sperry, Fleet and Facilities Manager, and Mike Johnson, the police captain. And with that, are you ready? All right, then.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. We're here tonight to, for your consideration of the interlocal agreement for cooperative purchasing between the City of Bothell and Arizona State Cooperative Purchasing Program. Tonight's action is to approve the purchasing cooperative agreement and allow the city manager to execute all documents necessary to make the purchase through Arizona Cooperative Program managed by the Arizona Department of Administration. Some of the items we're going to talk about for overview is the co-op purchasing agreement, why the need for the Arizona ILA, and the current status of the city fleet. For the Arizona State Co-op purchasing agreement, it is a government-to-government procurement service that allows for the purchase of products, goods, and services for now and future. The City of Bothell will be able to utilize the, the contracts through the state of Arizona. This can save time and resources with the procurement process, and this is consistent with the City of Bothell purchase policy. Why the need? So I have a, up there, a display of the current vehicle status with notes. You'll see that we have several that are out of service. Three of them are out of service as they are, two of them were totaled due to accidents and damage, and one has a major mechanical failure. All three of them were approved in the 2324 asset replacement for replacement. So these three vehicles that we would be purchasing would be replacing the three that are already in the asset replacement cycle budget. The other, the others that you, that are noted there are out due to repairs as well, but those should be back in service relatively soon based on repairs. These three vehicles that we have available for purchase today are the only three available in the state right now, and we are offering them through our, through the city's outfitting and upfitting company that we use for PD vehicles. They are a ship-through company for the state of Arizona co-op agreement, and that's why we need the, this, this agreement to be able to purchase these three vehicles that they have currently available. The city fleet and the current order status with the pandemic and, and moving forward, manufacturers are still experiencing supply chain shortages, labor shortages, and being able to deliver these vehicles that we have on order. We, since the pandemic, the delivery times have increased from three to four months to 12 months plus, sometimes waiting up to 18 months to get delivery on vehicles that we have ordered. Another issue is that all manufacturers have shortened the order windows. The order windows have typically in the past been six months plus, usually opening in September and closing March, April of the next year. Last two, three years, they have closed them unexpectedly and without notice within a week of opening. It's been very difficult to get a car spec'd and quoted to be able to move forward with purchase. And with that, we've missed out on some of the purchases and why we're at where we're at with the aging fleet. As of September, we do have four hybrid interceptors on order from the order that we made in September '22. As of today, we do not have a build date yet from the manufacturer. And just a note for these three that we would be purchasing from, through the Arizona Co-op, they are not hybrids, and I know that we've made a discussion that best possible, make a, make a hybrid purchase or, or alternative fuels purchase as we can. With that, yeah. Approve the, our request is to approve the Arizona State Purchasing Co-op Agreement and authorize the city manager to execute all documents.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. I just was wondering, the four hybrid vehicles that have been ordered, does purchasing these three jeopardize, like, will we not need those? Will we still get those when they're available at some magic point in the future, or?
No. The four that we have on order plus the three are, would still fall in the 2324 asset replacement. They would just be allocated to the other vehicles that we have in the asset replacement fund.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zornz?
I had a couple of questions, and now I can only think of one question. Perils of not writing them down. What are the age range on the, our existing of the nine vehicles that are working? What are, what is the age range on those vehicles?
Oh, I think our oldest is 2015.
Okay.
That I'm, that Mike has right here. And then the newest would be 2021.
And, and what's the, just out of curiosity, what's the average miles that are put on a vehicle during a year about?
In a year? In a year? I, I don't know that number off the top of my head, but probably roughly estimate about 25,000.
Okay, okay. I know my husband would say if it's not a certain brand, it probably only gets about $100,000, $1,000 miles a year. He's got a favorite maker. I'm not going to give them a shout out. Then my last question is, how do they deliver these? Do we have to go down to Arizona and get these, or no, they come to us?
As I said, the, the vendor that we use for outfitting is a ship-through dealer, and so they get them delivered directly to them, which this vendor is located in Lakewood.
That's not too far.
And then that vendor, once they're done outfitting, and part of their delivery process is to bring it to us.
Oh, how easy is that?
And then we do onsite inspection.
Cool, okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Hi, thank you so much for this presentation and for, you know, going to creative lengths to solve this problem. If I'm understanding this correctly, this agreement that we are approving tonight is not a purchase of these agree, of these vehicles. It is just the ILA that says that we can then get a purchase order in the future to come back to us. Am I correct, incorrect on that?
So tonight is for action for the ILA, and then we would follow our purchasing policy, which allows for asset replacement within the budgeted funds that have already been approved.
So that wouldn't have to come back to us, then?
Correct.
Got it, okay. Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
I don't have any questions. We need vehicles, and clearly we're being creative in how to source them because I don't think buying through an Arizona Co-op from the company in Lakewood and having to bring it back to us was the first option. So if there aren't any other questions, a, a motion would be great. Councilmember Manke?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute the Arizona State Purchasing Cooperative Agreement and authorize the city manager to execute all documents necessary to make purchases through the Arizona Cooperative Program managed by the Arizona Department of Administration.
Second.
All right, I have a motion on the floor for the recommended action from Councilmember Manke. Thank you for reading it, Councilmember. And a second from Councilmember Zornz. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember McNeil absent and excused.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Move.
I was going to ask you about that, but on the, on the other slides.
All right, moving on to Agenda Bill 23049, Board and Commission Appointments. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. As you know, last week you all got to interview a number of applicants for board and commission openings, and so tonight we're asking you to vote for those appointees. Each of you have a voting sheet, actually have three in front of you. We can go up to three rounds, we can go more if we need to. So what we're asking tonight is that you, per the protocol manual, place your votes via written ballot. We will collect those ballots and tally the votes, and you may want to take a break while we do that. I will say that a couple of things. We have three openings on Landmark Preservation, and we had one person apply but another person who picked it as an alternate. And I also heard word tonight that Andrew Salazar is willing to serve on Landmark Preservation Board. So if you, there's room for write-ins if you want to write in any candidates. We also had a number of youth applicants for the Arts Commission, and we had two for the Parks Commission, so you may want to appoint one of those from the arts to the parks as well. We, the clerk's office will appoint the position numbers and notify the applicants. And with that, I would ask that you, we begin voting, fill those out, and we will collect those. I'm going to go over to that side of the room so I can tally the votes with Robin, and then we'll announce that. If we need to go to a second round, we'll certainly do that. Each applicant needs four votes in order to be appointed. And I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any. When you're done, if you pass them down to Robin, and I'll meet her over there. Okay. Landmark, I'm going to start with the people who got appoint, the ones that are appointed, and we'll go back to the ones that we still need to go a third round on. Andrew Salazar got four votes for Landmark Preservation Board, so that one's fully appointed. And then on the Planning Commission, Claire Robson got four votes, so that's fully appointed. So, we're going to go round three. We don't have to vote for the arts, the adults for the arts, but on the arts youth, we still need one more. And so I'm going to say this, and I, I know I'm not pronouncing their names right, so I apologize. Baharvi Doshi and Jaden Chang each got votes for the arts youth.
Baharvi Doshi got three votes for the Arts Position, but also three votes for the Youth Position on Parks. Jayden Chang got three votes for the Arts Position and one on the Parks. And Gracie Cromholtz got two on the Youth Position for the Parks. So we still need one on each. Does it, does that make sense? I'm sorry. One more time. Baharvi got, Doshi got three votes for the Youth Position on the Arts Commission, and also got three votes on the Parks Youth Commission. Jayden Chang got three votes for the Arts Youth, as well as one for the Parks Youth. And Gracie Cromholtz got two, she's, she applied for Arts, but she got two for Parks Youth. So I need one, one more for each of those.
Is that it?
No. And then I need, let's see, we need one more for the Parks Adult. So let me tell you what I got voting-wise. I got Joanne Harkinen got two votes, Nicholas Borer has three votes, and David Bain has one. So I still need one. One, one for the Arts, uh, Park, sorry, one for the Parks Adult Position. I need one Youth, one Parks, I need one Youth on Arts. Have I received all of them?
Yeah, I think so.
Ben? Okay, round three. We've got everybody appointed, so. Jayden Chang got four votes on Parks for Youth. Baharvi Doshi got four for the Yu, uh, I'm sorry. Jayden Chang got the Arts Youth. Baharvi Doshi got the Parks Youth Position, and Nicholas Borer got the Parks Adult Position. So, now you're gonna have to bear with me while I name all these names, unless you just wanna ratify the votes, and we'll call it good.
Whatever we do, can we get a printed copy of this, you know, like in the next month or so?
Yeah, yeah. So I can go through and just name the people that got appointed, if you'd like me to do that really quick. So Arts Youth are Michelle Lee and Jayden Chang. The Arts Adult are, Arts Adult Positions, Holly Hughes and Kylie Chang. Landmark Preservation is Andrew Salazar, Brittany Miles, and Rolfson are Jolie. Did I say that pretty badly? Okay.
I am not gonna correct you.
Okay. The LTAC Positions are Gullid Mohammed, Catherine Lally, and Dana Abbar. The Parks Youth are, hold on, Parks Youth are Baharvi Doshi. Yeah, we, we might not, we might not have it. Jayden Chang got it, oh yeah, Jayden Chang and Michelle Lee, sorry. Baharvi Doshi and...
Jace.
Jace Bronka are the Parks Youth. The Parks Adult are Maggie Catlin, Manny Ocampo, Whitney Naginbauer, and Nicholas Borer, and Planning Commissioner Carsten Kurde and Claire Robinson. Thank you. So now I would like, I need a motion to ratify the votes, please.
Councilmember Dodd.
I move to ratify the votes.
Don't need to call on you for a second.
Second.
Awesome. I have a motion for Councilmember Dodd to ratify the votes, and a second from Councilmember Alderks. Any discussion of the motion? Good. I didn't mean that question. City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. I'm gonna go down the line, because I don't have my little list of position numbers. So I'm gonna say Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alkavra.
Yes.
Councilmembers Orns.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks.
Yes.
And Councilmember Menke.
Yes.
Thank you. Passes 6-0, with Councilmember McNeil absent.
Today I learned that even Laura doesn't have position numbers remembered yet, which makes me feel a whole lot better, because I don't either.
They're on my...
Yeah, there's a card, I read it. Yeah. Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to break for 10 minutes. Is that enough time for you? Perfect. And then we're, we're going to reconvene the meeting in Room 107 for the duration of the meeting. Those attending in person may join the study session in Room 107 or remain in council chambers as the meeting will be streamed in chambers. For those attending virtually, please follow the Teams link on the agenda or continue to view the meeting on YouTube. It is 7:31 right now, we will meet in there at 7:41. I'm not gonna round up four minutes.
Yeah. We might have a point of interest.
We're gonna do a council meeting. We've got Agenda Bill 23050, Main Street Closure Pilot Transportation Update. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We're thankful to be here yet again this evening. With me tonight is Erin Leonhart, Director of Public Works, and Steve Morikawa, Public Works Capital Division Manager. And tonight we'll be talking about the, the work in front of us for the next year regarding the Main Street closure. Transportation has several items on the docket of work that they're getting done this next year. We are not looking for action this evening, we're not looking for any feedback you might have as they continue to progress with their work. Currently, your proclamation lasts until March of 2024 for the closure. So with that, I am gonna transfer it over to Erin to take us on our way.
Tony, appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. So just as Tony mentioned, this is an update, so we're not, not decision-making this evening. And we, just as a refresher as to how we came, we arrived here. So in November of 2021, the City Council allocated funds from the American Rescue Plan Act for retractable bollards to more easily close Main Street and Festival Street for community gathering and special events and that sort of thing. And then in March of last year, the City Council extended the Main Street closure for a two-year pilot, and asked staff to provide data, provide data about traffic and transit, as well as engage stakeholders about the closure of Main Street. So now we're here, and Steve is going to provide an update on those two items.
So, good evening. So Public Works Department has two efforts underway associated with Main Street. The first one is a transportation analysis that's part of the comprehensive plan update, Fast and Furious, and kinda heading down the road now. And the other one is a planning and design effort focused on the closure infrastructure, which, you know, likely would be some sort of bollard system. So let's start with the transportation analysis. So, we're gonna be doing a citywide transportation analysis in the form of a model, and that will be completed in support of the overall Imagine Bollard Comprehensive Plan update. As part of the work, the downtown will have a more detailed analysis, it'll have a finer grid. They have these things called TAZs, that we have large land use areas throughout the city. Well, in downtown, we're gonna get smaller, so we can do a refined analysis. Specifically, we're gonna do a model that essentially looks at a base year, we're gonna collect new data this year, what the traffic looks like. And then we're gonna do a model, technically 20 years out, but it's 21 years here, because the plan is due in 2024. We're gonna do an AM and a PM. Typically, for comprehensive plans, you do a PM. PM is typically the worst, but in downtown, there are different things going on, so sometimes the AM is worse in certain areas than the PM. And then we will test Main Street closed, that one block, as well as open, and see what it does to the traffic. And we also probably will look at other things potentially we could do if it's closed, if we did something else, could we mitigate whatever effects that could have. So, parallel to that, but separate, so we call it the Main Street Festival Street Improvement Project. It's Project T102, a new capital facilities plan. That's the name, you've provided a million dollars in ARPA funds. That was the best guess, estimate at the time. It's gonna really depend on the scope of work that we wind up with, and how much it costs. So it's gonna address the closure, whether it's intermittent or permanent, and it will look from a functional base point of view. In other words, what facilities are necessary to make the closures most efficient, safe, and supportive of events? It's not gonna be a traffic analysis. So the project will look at things like how to close the streets, and our first best guess is things like retractable bollards, because the bollards we have out there right now, in order to stop a car, and there are several different vehicles you could decide to stop, it gets pretty darn heavy. And you saw the foundation picture opening slide, it gets pretty beefy on the ground. So those are some decision points. We have to provide, figure out how to provide advanced notification and warning, so if you're driving down the street, you don't wanna find out when you get to the bollard, you want advanced warning somehow. That could play into advance, you know, there's an event coming as well. So it's not just the traffic thing, it could also be kind of an overall thing. We have to consider how to turn around and what it does to driveways. So when you have a bollard and you don't have a cul-de-sac, are we pushing cars into private driveways that we really don't wanna do? So we have to be smart about where we're working on these things. And then, you know, there may be some other things that we might wanna put in to efficiently support events, such as like power bollards, or places to plug in for electricity, as well as maybe banner sign. So one of the things that will occur later this spring is gathering input from businesses, property owners, event planners, and staff, and staff means everybody from fire, to police, to works, to operations, and everybody, about what is working well and what is not. Again, we're focusing on the events, and what is going well for the events, and what could use improvement in terms of the facility. The goal of the project, again, is to, for functionality. We hope to have a concept later this summer, 2023. Just as a reminder, there's actually three blocks we're looking at. The first block is Festival Street, which this picture shows City Hall on the right and the police building on the left. Main Street's the other one, that's on the far right, and it's kinda looking west, 102nd. And the one we added based on discussions before is to look at additional block on 101st between 183rd and Street. So those are the three blocks currently in the scoreboard. This is kinda what the schedule looks like. This spring in 2023, the top line is always gonna be the modeling effort, and the bottom line's gonna be the infrastructure project. So for the modeling effort, we're gonna try to get the baseline work done, set up the model. We're gonna do outreach, like I told you, with stakeholders for the infrastructure project. In the summer, we're gonna start the 20, the future model for citywide comp plan, and hopefully by then we'll have at least a layout concept of what the infrastructure improvements would look like. In the fall, we should be finishing up our 2044 modeling, and that's citywide, so we should be able to have some results for the downtown area specifically. And then by that time, we should be detailing the design of the infrastructure. Other than the layout, these are the specific things, like how big our foundation, exactly the nuts and bolts, how everything goes together. And then in winter 2024, we should have a summary of an analysis done, and then we should be complete with the design of the infrastructure. At that point, we would be ready to come back, you folks, and hopefully have a good, solid piece of information from a transportation point of view and facility point of view to talk about. That's what we have at this time, so there's no, again, no recommendation action, this is kind of an update, but certainly welcome to our hearings and discussion on this. Thank you so much for the presentation, it's exciting. I'm looking forward to it, for this to come back. Let me sit this way, so my voice will project out. A couple of questions. The first is, the people you're gonna, the stakeholders you're gonna collect input from did not include the actual people who visit, and it wasn't listed explicitly, so I don't know if that's implicit in your... We're not going to the general public, because we're trying to produce a facility that works for what we're trying to do. So we're really getting to event planners, so whoever, you know, like, whoever has held an event, and the city people are running events, and understand the setup issues and the safety issues, and how big these events get, and some of the how people get here kinda thing. We do wanna talk about the business owners and property owners. Two of the blocks, the Main Street block doesn't have any driveways. Festival Street has one driveway, but it's to the police department, we can work with them. The other block has one driveway, and if we block it off during an event, then that's kind of an issue. I mean, we've done it before, but I don't know if, how, how much we've actually talked to the private business. So we wanna hear from them, what's working well and not well from a circulation point of view, and how big these things get, and are there issues coming up that maybe even city and event planners don't realize? It makes sense to me, because you're designing a product, all the stakeholders, the finance people, the accounting people, the marketing people, and also the users, because they're gonna provide input to the event planners, to the businesses also. I would recommend that you at least think about it. Okay. I know it will add to the scope and maybe cost and all of that, but maybe as we have our summer series, summer nights, ask folks who attend, just to make it, I don't know. The other question I had is about the business stakeholders, is...
Is, are we doing an economic development plan for, if this is going to be a 20-year plan, what are we going to do from a business-wise to enable more businesses to, you know, enjoy this new space that we're going to be creating?
That's not part of the effort. Again, the project itself is purely an infrastructure project, and what we can do is safely close off those three blocks. We didn't set it in the two blocks, but we added the third block.
Okay, so maybe it's another, a new, another project that we need to conduct. How do we do a business development type thing in the future, seems like?
Please.
Thank you, Mayor. I, that's a really good idea of Deputy Mayor. Part of your council priorities is to do an economic vitality plan, and that work will start getting underway this next year. It may not coincide completely with the reopening or the closure, whatever the decision point is on Main Street. I can't commit to that, but I do know that we've got a kind of, you've asked staff to do a broader look at the economic vitality of the entire city. I also know that King County, through their comp planning and work of effort of the county planning policies, has made downtown a, what's the terminology I want to tell you about? Hang on just a second here. Has made downtown a countywide center by King County, which is also a good thing when it comes to economic development, because it is part of their citywide or countywide planning policies that this economic center is occurring here in Bellevue. Excuse me, in Buffalo. I apologize very much. The first that's come out. So we will, we'll continue to look at that, but I do think there's a path forward on that, and I'll make sure I've got it on a list for you.
T A Z, transportation, reassignment zone. I'm not sure, you know, I'd have to look. Thank you.
You can help me anytime.
I will, although I think you're done. So thank you for the presentation. I did have a couple of questions. So one, when we get business owner feedback, I would love kind of a categorization. Good night. A categorization of like kind of the type of business with the type of feedback that they have, because I think that's really going to help us dig into like what some of the issues are for different businesses. We don't have to get specific, like this person said this, this person said that. But I think we might, I suspect, and I'd like to find out if we see trends by business type. And I think as part of a, as Deputy Mayor said, I think long-term, if, let's say, we keep it closed or we keep it closed on evenings or whatever it ends up being, right? I think there's part of the economic planning that would be really important to help people understand, like, this is this situation. If your business isn't compatible with the situation, like, what are the options? And I'd love to see it. And I think I'm going to look this way, because I don't think this is on you guys, but like. For businesses who might want to be, you know, let's, I'm going to make up businesses. Let's not pick on anyone. Let's say you're a dental office and you need close parking, right? Maybe Main Street isn't the spot for the dental office, right, if the parking is? That kind of thing where we look at, obviously, we wouldn't just like up and move your business, but just, just options for people as they settle into what the future plan is. And then the other thing I was going to ask, I feel like, you know, you go on the internet. There's a study for everything, right? And I've seen numbers about like the amount of business that comes like through car, through bike, through other methods. And, you know, you hear different stories, oh, this city closed one this road, and now these businesses have more business or whatever. And so I think in addition to the feedback from business owners, I would love to see you guys vet the studies, right? Because I'm, you don't, shouldn't read everything on the internet, right? That's what Abraham Lincoln said. So you want to. So I would love to have just some data about what other cities have seen as they've done this as well. So we have the evidence, the kind of the testimonials from people in Buffalo, but also what are the trends overall?
Appreciate that. And to clarify, the stakeholder engagement that Steve's team is doing is specifically related to the special events and the infrastructure. And then we are working as an executive team to figure out who's on first as far as the engagement for the closure conversation itself. So that's excellent.
Thank you.
Can I jump in? Are you done? For now. My family gets frustrated with me because I set things up, and they're like, just get to the point. But I feel like I need to set this up. Is that on the closure of Main Street, big fan upfront, big huge fan of closing Main Street upfront. I live in downtown, go through downtown a lot. And what distresses me is that when I look at Main Street, unless if it's a summer weekend or evening, Main Street is dead. It is dead. There's hardly anybody on Main Street. And I remember when Main Street was open, you would always see people walking up and down sidewalk. And so a question I have, a request, if we're talking about traffic studies, could we look at? Because I, you know, I love the idea of closed Main Street, but the vitality is not what I was hoping to see. And I guess those, as you do your research, we'll find out if that, you know, what that vitality looks like.
Why are you pointing at me?
No. Yeah. No, but no. My hands down. I do, you know, I do love the concept of it, but the reality of it is, it's just, it just is a gut punch when I see how few people are using Main Street during most of the year. And so I guess if we can do it in our traffic study, could we study what it would be like to make it one way? And I know it makes people a little twitchy, but I like the idea of making it one way in that people who are using Main Street to just get to and from campus because that, or to the 102nd Bridge, one way kind of filters that down and makes people use for campus their entrances. And then, but that still allows flow of traffic through. And it would also, for the parking spots that are open, it would allow people to park. We could put bike lane in there where we could have bike traffic and get people off the sidewalk who are riding their bikes. And, and what was the other piece? Who knows what it was? Any rate, I would like to know, it seems like, because it's not my day job, it's your day job. Seems to me that if traffic was going westbound, it would be easy to block off traffic that would accidentally make a right-hand turn onto, you know, go onto Main Street. It would be, it would be easier to make it clear that this street is only going one way for that one block on Main Street. Maybe that's making it more complicated. But then on summer, in the summer, shut it down. And then, and completely shut down Main Street, put the bollards up 24/7 during summer. But when people are having to drop their kids off for karate or a senior to get eye care or whatever other businesses are saying this has been a hardship, would a one-way street during the fall, winter, spring sloppy wet months, would that allow that traffic to, to use those businesses and still allow bikes and a little bit more pedestrian safety? Could we have that question on what would a going one way would look like as far as?
We could certainly do the traffic analysis and see what it does for the vehicle flow.
Okay. Because there's also the concern of having to pay back all the work that was done, and that might give us the grace that the city doesn't have to reimburse. Is it state or federal money on that?
I think it's federal side.
It might, you know, it might, it might give everybody a little bit of something that they're looking for.
Ask a question?
Yeah.
This is a study session?
Yeah.
They're relieved, it's like not to then.
You point your finger too.
No. Talk about traffic or pedestrians. Talk about what does that have to do with opening up for cars to?
I don't know what it is. I just know the phenomenon, having lived here for quite a while, that when cars were going up and down Main Street, you always saw people walking up and down the sidewalk. And now you'll see a couple of people walking up and down the sidewalk. And they, you know, when it's not summer months, maybe one or two people.
Will that come out of this thing that you're doing? How many people, that people and all that stuff, or no?
Not necessarily. We might be able to like model like intersection use, but not, you know, how many people are actually using.
There's actually a company called Replica that does a lot of that data-based work already. And I haven't seen it. They sent some to me a year or so ago. But they can actually baseline it and say, and they use cell phone data, all sorts of different things, to figure out like how many people are actually like in a space at any given point in time. And not only can they baseline it to what Main Street used to be, they can also compare it to neighboring cities and their baselines of their similar areas. So like, we've got this thing going on. There was a pandemic. And, you know, there are a lot of businesses suffered during that. And is, is the difference that they're seeing because they're still recovering from that? Or is the difference seeing Main Street? And that that company can give some data that would provide some context around that that's, that's more than anecdote. And I'd like to see some actual like real information around pedestrian traffic there. What I always do when I look at Main Street and I see there's nobody on it, and I have a little bit of a sad, because I want there to be lots of people on it, is I look at a neighboring block, and there's never more people on the neighboring block.
But Main Street has always been a busy street for pedestrians.
That's why we should have data on it, so we can know.
Right. Well, it's the hub. It's the hub of the city.
Totally.
And the parking lot in the back is where people are accessing the other side of the block, so. But you're right, data would help enormously. We asked a lot of you, thank you for, for going through this and being so comprehensive in it. Steve, as you were giving, you know, think, details that you were talking about, considering on this, I thought, of course you would think of that. Why didn't I think of that? So.
This is his day job.
It is his day job.
No, thank you. This is a big, it was a big project. It's a big thing. Never happened, hasn't, my knowledge hasn't had, never happened in Buffalo, so.
No.
We need to comprehend, look at it.
The one thing that I would really like to see is kind of what I heard in your presentation is that we're looking at the transportation aspect, and then we're looking at like special events. I didn't hear any talk about like what an everyday would look like. And I would like to see like, because it's hard for me to judge this based on what's happened now, because the only thing we've done is put barricades up. And then last summer, we told the businesses, you can't even use the street anymore, like you couldn't. So it's like, what we've done right now is basically worse than just putting barricades up and saying, go to it, because we've restricted them from being able to do the things that would bring more vitality in. Before we make a permanent judgment on whether or not this should stay this way, I'd really like to vision what it could look like on an everyday. Is that big chess sets? Is that some skate features? Like, what are the kinds of things that would attract people there and make it a good place to be on a random Thursday where there's no event going on? And I want it to obviously work for events, because those are amazing, and we've had some really cool ones here. But I would really like to see like, what can we do to make this a really cool everyday place? And what can we do to kind of attract people and make it a place where people want to hang out, like?
Well, there was a feature that was on Main Street, and when Main Street was redone, it went away, was the gazebo. And that was a place where people often stopped. When it was inclement, they just sat, sat and talked.
What kinds of features attract people? What could we do that would make it a more pleasant place to be? What could we do that would make it more appealing on a, on a random Thursday, a random weekday, call it? That, that's the kind of work that I think is, I'm going to need to see before we open it back up, if we do. Like, if we don't ever have a conversation about what this could look like permanently, I'm uninterested in changing things from the way they are right now.
I'm looking at my friend, the deputy city manager. That's less a public works thing than perhaps some of my, some of my other colleagues.
I was thinking the same thing as I was. I think a couple of things. So there is a downtown subarea plan that has quite an extensive vision. There have been amendments done to that plan over the last several years. I couldn't tell you exactly, and they dealt with things like parking and trying to become a place to be, those types of concepts. Community Development is currently working on the comp plan. I'm going to need to check with Jason Greenspan, Community Development Director, and think about how we would wrap something bigger outside of the work that's already been started and done on the downtown subarea plan back in. But I don't want to get too far off on that branch without having someone whose day job is sitting next to me.
I just want to make sure, like, as we look at a timeline and we talk about potential decisions, like, I just want to make sure that that is incorporated, so we've done that work by the time decision comes around.
Sure. I can certainly, let me do some research into that and figure out how much further that is far from the work the council has already done with the downtown subarea visioning work that you've done. So that might just need to be brought back so that you know what it is, because you might find that it meets your need. So let's think about that, and I'll put that on my to-do list.
But I would also like to see some specific information about what we could do to further activate a street if we keep it pedestrianized.
Okay, but, oh, sorry.
But I would also love, love to like not have the big orange signs. If that's, or if there's a way to make that possible, that would be, that would be lovely. And I, I have a couple more things. I'm just going to go since I'm rolling. Like, I totally understand why businesses would think that this is the plan, because it's been three years. And not only have we done nothing, we've actually restricted them further from using it. And, I mean, I see no reason why that shouldn't end right now, because it's not like that space is being used for anything else. But I would like to show the businesses that we have a plan to try to make it better rather than feeling like we're simply taking something away. Because right now, to some of them, it feels like we're taking something away, and we haven't replaced it with anything, and I want to replace it with something. And I want to kind of talk about what that would look like before we, before we make a final decision on it.
I was just going to say, on the, on the topic of sort of the everyday thing, I, it's interesting to hear your perspective about getting empty, because I, living on the other side of the city, I didn't go to Main Street super often before the street was, was just available to walk on. And now we'll go there. My kid has picked one of the restaurants as his favorite restaurant. They know him now. But like, we'll go wait, because we have somewhere to wait. Walk around, we can, you know, he climbs all over everything. So I was thinking, something to climb on would be great if that street stays. But it's, it adds something that we don't really have a lot of. And also, like, I'm just going to give an example. So I have a friend who's extremely pregnant, and she's eating outside right now in deference to COVID and concerns about her baby. So like, we can go to Main Street and just eat outside without even, she doesn't have to go inside a restaurant to even get a table. And there's not a lot of other places in the city to do that so reliably. And there's a couple of choices right there. So it, it adds, it adds a lot. And I, it's not like vital that we keep it, but it's pretty cool. And I think we'd have to leave the city to get close, honestly. Food for them.
Play area would be awesome. Like, imagine being able to take your kids and know that like there's a play, it's basically a park, and they've got like a jungle, different play area they could go play while adults hang out. Like, that would be really cool.
Do a spot for that, but we'd have to have a conversation with property owner of the vacant lot.
Yes.
That would be cool. Also, like, playground should be big enough for like adults who want to join in to also.
Yes, I'm all for adult playground.
Back merry-go-rounds.
But like, but a convers, this is the conversation I want to see, like, what could we do there to make it special? What could we do?
Erin and Steve aren't here for that conversation.
Yes, he does.
I have a couple of questions. Public Works, I would like to see and notice every alternative you bring in here. It's going to cause more work, but is it possible to see multiple or possible alternatives? Like, open, remain closed, open during the day, close on the weekends and nights, one-way streets? Can we look at varying things other than just either open or close? Is that possible?
I think we are, I think the time period, whether it's closed for a few hours or whether it's closed over summer, still has inherently the same issues on notifying people that the roads changed and everything. Closed is easiest because it's permanent. You just put signs or whatever you need to do to let people know. Eventually, people know there's no road there. So it is more problematic to open it and close it. So it is more problematic to open it and close it. But you're also getting more use out of it. You're using for traffic, you're using it for pedestrians, you're using, you know? But it is difficult. And I think part of that is, I think we can make it safe. I think it's wanting to catch the driver coming down from the north end before they take the left turn and they don't get frustrated. And it happens, you know, if it's a regular thing, it might be okay. It's a periodical thing that pops up certain times. It might be more difficult. So that's, I think, one of the biggest challenges. Now, I think challenges come with opportunities. Cause when you see that sign that says it's closed, that means something's happening. So it could be a positive things at one. So I think we're looking at that range. And that's why we're looking at the infrastructure from whether it's closed permanently or intermittently. Care how long, what infrastructure has to be there.
Also, remember, make, are you also asking about modeling or are you just asking about the infrastructure?
I think just like, what are the possibilities that we could do with it? What are the possible options? And then what does that look like? Could be traffic impacts. It could be pedestrian impacts. It could be things like, I don't know, if we still have to pay back the million dollars if we keep it closed permanently. How's my, kind of my second question was, is that still on the table? Or has time gone by long enough that we wouldn't have to pay that back potentially?
I'll answer it loosely. I'll say it's still on the table.
Okay.
My recommendation would answer that once we have more of a direction. I don't think you want to go ahead and ask it about that at this point.
Sure. Last question for, for Public Works. So the analysis will be ready in winter twenty twenty four. So what do we need to further extend the closure before that date? Because our, I think it was March twenty twenty two, we did the two year?
I'm hoping by the end of this year, twenty twenty three, have sufficient data from a, from two sides, traffic point of view, what the infrastructure looks, that's, that's the transportation realm. I think by then, hopefully, the public input side might also.
So we'll have a meeting at the end, toward the end of the year then to talk through this.
I'm hoping more like February-ish, maybe March-ish, about your two year deadline would be nice.
Also, we'll just have a meeting and then not have something in between.
We could definitely do that if we have milestones we've achieved. It's gonna be happening in the midst, as an example of modeling, it's gonna be happening in the midst of a nine month, really fast paced sprint to try to get the comp plan done. So while that happens, this will happen. So I'm not sure exact dates. So I'm hedging my bet and saying probably more like February, March.
So we'll have to, to this point, we'll have to, there's a possibility to, that we'll need to extend beyond the March if we can't make a decision by then.
I'm hoping not. I think your goal was to have all the information you needed. And I think part of the great thing in this discussion is we under, getting more information what you want. I think from the transportation side, um, what this infrastructure would look like and what kind of signs, big orange, these signs are not, you know, would have to happen. And then the other side would be others that affect the rest of downtown, pushing cars away from this, this corridor.
And the separate track of visioning and, and stakeholder engagement related to the, to the.
The other thing that I would like to see is like, I don't understand how we're gonna do stakeholder in public outreach when we haven't visioned it. Because we're, it's not gonna be an honest comparison of like, hey, here are your options. It's like, they're just gonna be like, hey, the option is to open it to cars or do nothing. Cause that's really what we've done so far. So like, I would like to do the visioning and I would like to figure out what this could be before we do that public input. Looking over there. I'm just, you're presenting, like, I, 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 I would love to do a. And, and rather than say, hey, do you like it or not? To be able to all of us work together and say, hey, we've gone through a process. We've worked with a consultant. We've figured out what best practices are. And here's what it would look like. And there's a park in the middle. There's a gazebo. There's like, you know, different community amenities that could draw people in. And if we can paint a picture of what it could be to them, I think we'd get a lot more realistic public input. Like, because if I was over there and I saw three years and nothing had happened, I would assume that nothing was going to continue to happen.
And I think it's also good to talk to the businesses of how they've been impacted so far.
Sure.
That's going to shape our, that's gonna shape our planning. You know, if just the restaurants say, yeah, it's been great. Then we, then council has to look at each other and say, so what do we say about the other businesses, you know? That's gonna be a restaurant.
I really liked, I don't remember who brought it up earlier, the idea of, uh, re, any, some kind of relocation assistance. If that's helped finding them someplace, if that's a little bit of money while they're down. Like, we've got enough roads in Bothell to stretch to Spokane. If two hundred yards of it is pedestrianized, like, there is an entire rest of the city if they don't feel it works well for them. But still, even when we ask them how they've been impacted, which we should do. Like, I think we should present them two different options and one of them is not, it stays like this forever.
Well, uh, uh, but a lot of those people are building owners. They own those buildings. And we're talking about impacting their property. And I think they have every right to say, you know, I started this business under this pretense and now this has become quite, quite a hardship. And I think we should be hearing that.
All that I'm saying is that we should try to be giving them the most realistic options when we do the public.
I think you're saying, don't talk to them. You're saying, let's do our homework. Let's come together, figure it out.
Let's do the public outreach when we have information to give them that is accurate. And right now, we just don't have that because we haven't done any kind of a visioning process. And I don't think anybody wants it to stay like that forever.
Right. And, and, and I think, I think asking them right now is not a good idea. But five, six months from now, we should be asked, we should be talking to them, which is what I think your plan is, to be talking to them this summer sometime. Is that what you said?
Again, limited in the way we're gonna talk to them from.
From your end.
The closure, the events.
I think that's the discussion. That's cool.
It's a little different.
No, we're talking about the scope of this particular.
Well, Director Lenhart said that the ELT is gonna talk on a broader level.
Right.
So, and I think we all want to hear that. I think also it's a good point that if we're talking about what do you see for the future? We need to have that vision. I just feel like it's that, but better. Like, let's have a vision to share.
Work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Tony, did you want to say something?
I was just gonna say, I hear you. And I've got notes and I think what makes a lot of sense, I do think that businesses have something to say now at some point about what they think they might like to see. I think they probably have some interest now. And I will work with community engagement and we'll come up with a plan that helps the businesses as well as yourselves get information. You know, I think it's, it's never, it's never perfect. But I think we can get information that would help drive that decision and give you a feedback.
And I'm interested in knowing like what they think about it right now. Like, I just, before we do all of everything, I want, I want them to have input to say, hey, if we did keep this closed permanently, what are the kind of things that you'd like to see there? And then we can come to them with a couple of different realistic options and do like some more accurate outreach.
Interesting things, I think, came up tonight during public comment from Mr. Milligan. A, a restaurant on Main Street. And my assumption was, based on all the prior feedback that had been gathered last year when I looked at this, was that restaurants stood the most to benefit from it. And I thought, surely, like, all restaurants should be doing well on Main Street. I know Alexis was really excited about it, Bonnie was excited about it, Crowbar. To hear from another restaurant that wasn't doing well, that kind of shattered my mental model of who was doing well and who wasn't. And I'm sure there's non restaurants that are doing well as well that we may not know about. But I think the business impact analysis will really help us know what locations on Main Street, what types of businesses, is there a trend? Is there not a trend? Those are things I'm interested in seeing.
And the restaurateur that came tonight has never made outdoor seating available. And I kind of understand why, because it's a temporary thing. And why would they invest money in this thing that's gonna go away? But if we came to them and said, here's what this could look like moving forward, like, there might be things in there they like as well. And they might feel the security to do something that way.
Jenny needs to, Jenny needs some.
I'll point at Jenny.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm actually still in gathering mode. So this has been a helpful conversation. One of the questions, Steve, that you had mentioned earlier was that you would be testing it with and without Main Street closure, which means like, is that like a real life test or is that a theoretical test? Like, will you actually be opening Main Street back up and for a period of time during the study time and setting it when it is open during this pilot?
So for the future, all our traffic is modeled. It's not real, obviously, because we have to make projections. It is calibrated on existing conditions. So you actually bring up a good question. Right now, we're gonna be taking traffic out, but Main Street's closed. So what does it look like when it's open? So that's, that's a good question. We'll figure that out. There's a couple of ways we could do that. We could go back a few years, confirm whether we feel that's an accurate model, what it would look like, do that. Only other way, like you said, would be unfortunately to.
Real life.
Yeah.
And that has so many variables that would make it difficult.
Well, I think what you'd have to do is keep it open for a while, just to get it to kind of.
Normalize.
Yep. Okay, that's partly why I asked that question. Related question. And when you're talking about, uh, modeling, so you have your two different times where you're gonna do your spring and your summer. Does that take into account how traffic patterns are different at different times of year? I'm thinking like the difference between schools in session and schools out of session.
Yeah. First off, I'm gonna tell you guys, traffic models are not, you know, when I design a beam, it's not perfectly accurate. It's, it's our way of looking at something that works. So modeling is similar to that. Modeling is kind of like, they call it a gravity model because it's kind of like water flowing. So you squeeze this arterial and this one pops up. So it is a model. It has a plus or minus, and it's not minus one percent. Also minus a few tens of percent. It's a projection and it's a tool to use. So hopefully, we don't look at it and we're gonna say, well, there's gonna be three thousand forty two cars there in the future. You're just gonna say more like, there's gonna be double the traffic here, you know, forty percent more traffic theoretically. And in the future, we always update that every so often because things don't go the way we think they're gonna go here. So what the model would show is if there's any red flags, that's what I'm, that's what I would look at. So the red flag to me would be so much traffic goes onto one eighty fifth, it kind of hinders transit. If it hinders transit, is there something I can do unhinder transit? So those would be mitigation, what we call mitigation, so that if we close it, transit is not negatively affected. Or, you know, what other ideas could we do such that if we do close it, everything else that we do want to work, works. Some of the decisions you will have to make are not technical decisions like that. There will be the look and feel of downtown like you're talking about. So if, just like squeezing traffic, if we, um, squeeze the traffic off of Main Street, guess what? There's gonna be more traffic on the other local streets and Main Street. Probably gonna be more turning movements. So those streets become a little less pedestrian friendly because more cars are gonna be there and less cars on Main Street. So do you want an average downtown that has a certain amount of traffic? Or do you want to push it into one section? Our goal eventually is to get people out of cars so you have less traffic. The long term goal could sure eventually be to get rid of street grids. Cause that's, that's our long term goal. The hard part is that transition part. People are still in cars. It seems like we're gonna be in cars, electric cars. And then, you know, hopefully, but that's gonna take a while. How do we get there? Still have the rest of our downtown, you know, acceptable to what we, we want it to look like as well. When you look at that, you know, again, we look at patterns, we look at trends, we look at red flags and things. I wouldn't look at exact numbers.
Have we seen any traffic problems in the last three years? Like, has this been an issue?
Right now, we took our latest volumes in the fall. We saw is generally we're about fifteen percent less than when COVID started. So if you ask me today, if you ask me ten years from now, that's what our model goes to. So we're, we're going through it with our eyes open. We know what we're going into. Especially if we bring more people downtown, we try to get them into the bus, but every unit still has to record parking space or whatever it is.
I mean, that's a, yeah, that's a bigger problem than just closing blocks, right?
It is, but it's, it's the entirety.
Yeah.
You have more? Did you? You mentioned, um, types like that, kind of you've thought through different types of signage to announce events and closures. And, and I, I would love just some rough strokes on what, what those might look like or how those might appear in the community.
We have not. We just started it.
We would like that too. I feel like you, and you want to like get real pictures to show us.
So we've had like an internal meeting with some of the internal stakeholders to talk about some of the things that are, in terms of things. And one of them was, we let people know that this road is closed. I mean, again, it's mostly the intermittent one. But you're right, if it's all big orange flashing signs, that's a great look for our downtown. But if, if it's not that, like I said, people look at it and they start thinking, doesn't mean that Main Street is closed. It means there's a.
Happening.
You know?
Yeah.
So that discussion took place, but we haven't come to the point where we've gotten what our alternatives could be.
Bring up the disco ball.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, like, you know, what's on the, what's on the market? Like, what are other people using? Similar question, and I totally Googled this. Uh, how do power ballards work? That sounds kind of cool.
Power ballads sound like the coolest thing ever.
So I'm very, I'm a novice. I know enough to be dangerous. So the kind we have is you lift out, raise two hundred pounds. Imagine we have a few people lifting that, um, deadlifts. Yeah. There are very fancy ones that you press a button and they hydraulically go down. I'm a little worried about that because I don't trust hydraulics. They tend to break and they tend to leak. We don't want that happening in one. Um, there are the type that you can push down, it's air activated and you kind of flick a switch and it'll air activate up. It seems to be a happy medium. So again, there's a whole range that we want to look at and see what fits best.
Okay. Cause when I heard power ballards, I thought you were saying like ballards you could plug into.
Power ballards are something else. I'm sorry.
So we actually have. Like, I like the sounds of those ballards too. I just don't know the terminologies.
My fault. So power ballards, they look like ballards. We actually have them on Main Street on a couple of blocks. They're that little fat thing that's about this high. It kind of looks like a street light truncated. You actually lift the cover and you can actually plug in stuff. So it's for vendors that need electricity, we would try to place for them to plug in. Right now, they're either running long cords that are using the streetlights, which are not built for that. We would put in strategic locations where they could power up.
That's very cool. My, I guess, my, like, that, that is the end of my questions, but, uh, just in reactions to my colleagues. I'm not talking to you for this. I know who I'm addressing. And, and that is more of the visioning and everyday use of Main Street. Just like, let's get creative and let's have some fun figuring out what we might do there. I know that my children's happiest memories were in University Village. Because we, like, when they were babies, we lived in university family housing. And so we walked from our apartment complex into U Village and there were fountains and there was a playground in the middle of the walkway and, um, they could just pop into shops and we just spent hours there. And so I think about, you know, how do we get that feel in Main Street? I love the idea of the gazebo. I love the idea of a playground. I love the idea of the giant chess set. Check out, just Google like painted streets and see some fun things that people have done around the world. There's one really fun where you can like paint footprints, like foot, like on, on this, the road that if you follow them correctly, you're now dancing. And so you can get some really fun, cute and like interactive things going on there. I love the idea of having climbing equipment. Becky, I feel like I want to talk to you afterwards. Yeah, yeah. I will say that one of the things that I, I wish would happen, and I know that not many people are listening to this on the internet.
It's recorded.
It is recorded, but that doesn't mean they're listening. But somebody's, I, and, and maybe that's somebody, somebody is me. But I really, really love to see some playdates happening on Main Street. Where, you know, parents pull their kids out and they're, they're writing, the kids writing toys. And we just get a. And we just get a group of, you know, 10, two to four-year-olds scooting around on their little toys and just say like, this is an open street. Like, it is safe here, you can play here. Um, and and, you know, I think of the opportunities that, that we have yet to explore. Um, maybe because we haven't made partnerships with, uh, different organizations that, that might be interested in, in doing some of these more daytime reoccurring activities, um, that aren't, you know, are big events. Um, there's just a lot of like unexplored potential with what we've already done. Um, and that's, that's what I'm really excited and interested in seeing. And I know that that's more related to economic development and community engagement and maybe parks and, and there's a lot of stakeholders in the city that would be involved in that. Um, the visioning process, I think is just going to be really important. And so what Steve and Erin are working on is the infrastructure that lets us then do the engagement and the connection and community, like it's, yeah. You guys are the streets, thank you for providing the streets. And then what do we do on those streets?
Sure.
And that's the transition over, and that's what I hope ELT will come back to us with.
So I, again, uh, you do have a downtown uh, sub-area plan that has quite an extensive vision in it. Um, I know it's a few years old, but it's still a very active plan that's being worked and continually comes back to you. So I will commit to talk to Jason and find out what we would need to do to look at that. I also know that the community development, I want to make sure I'm also setting expectations is really swamped getting a comp plan.
I've asked them for a few things recently.
So I, I think we have to be really thoughtful about what we can ask a few people can, can do, but I do know your downtown vision, that, that's in the downtown sub-area plan, I actually pulled it out and read it today. Is talks about heart of the city and places to be and a place to go in the heart of the city and meaningful community members. It's like, it enhances the essential publicness of downtown, the wide range of public places and civic buildings. So you're, you might have the vision that you're looking for already set, and I think we probably might need to look at that again as we talk about visioning.
I think we also need to, if we're looking at this, think about impacts on parks. Because if we're getting this to be closed, it needs to be maintained, the flower beds, the sidewalks and the street needs to be cleaned. It's going to have an impact on
Yes.
requirements for parks and maintenance staff, so want to make sure we're thinking about everything when we're doing it, not just all the fun cool things, but the ops cost to it, everything comes with ops costs and Councilmember McNeil's
That's staff's job, man.
Councilmember McNeil were here, he would be the first one to talk about, he thought about just saving Wayne, but he never thought about the ongoing maintenance and what it would take to keep it up, and that is a very real and very expensive cost, so just need to keep that in mind as well.
Yeah.
We, I'd like to see like a roof over a chunk of it.
Speaking of costs.
Well, there we go, I like it.
I had a question actually for Steve and Erin. Um, wild times. This is about traffic modeling. So what's, what, what some people like to do is look at traffic estimates from long ago and say, okay, did this actually pan out? Right? Like, it's now 2020 or it's now almost 2025, was the estimate accurate? And I'm just curious, when you're making those models, let's say, because I'm sure Main Street has been studied a number of times in, you know, in the history of Bothell, so let's say we had an estimate a few years ago that like traffic didn't get to that point or like it wasn't quite right, do, does that kind of get reabsorbed in your next model to kind of see like, okay, this is what was estimated, but it didn't pan out? Like, is it kind of a learning model?
Your models as you do. Well, the model starts with, it's our regional council, that's where we started. However, COVID, effects of COVID seems to be so as an example, you might say, well, between, in the 20 years that we're planning, the easiest way is to say straight line growth. Just 3% growth every year, whatever, that's a straight line growth. With COVID, what happens is it went up like this and then it flattened. It flattened because people are staying home, now it's going to gain again. That's the big question. And that's what we have to figure out, that's what the region is trying to figure out. How quickly is it going to go back up? It's not going to go up as quickly as it used to because we have telecommuting and that's not going away. So that's a great thing because we can already chop off the top a little bit. So it's, it's, it's not going to be the straight line it was before, it's going to be different and that's something that we're going to we're going to work with our consultants and PSRC and figure out the best we can extrapolate that, figure out what that should be. Hopefully that's a lot better than it was before because we, during telecommuting. The other thing we're going to do during the comp plan is we're going to use other tools. So before we start doing you know, in the old days, it was widening roads to do whatever. We'll do things like TDM like we did Canyon Park, so it will be considered for downtown in part of our plan. Doesn't mean it's going to be implemented, but it will be part of our policy, I can almost guarantee you. Because that would say, well, there's less trips because there's less trips, I don't have to do as much. The next thing we'll do is, you know, smart ITS, basically our traffic systems, we're going to try to refine it rather than increase it. So there's this whole laundry list that we're going to go through before we come down to our road projects in road capacity, so we will go through. We will try to figure out what is what is our best estimate of what it's going to look like 20 years from now.
And I, I don't expect that you'll be able to model like the next pandemic or anything like that, I totally am sensitive to that, yeah, I was just curious how that sort of learns and is informed by past results over time, so thank you.
The question, Councilmember.
Anytime.
Here's what you need.
Did you get what?
I think so.
Thank you for providing the palette.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
It's always good to see you, Erin.
All right, council conversations.
I have one. Um, so I attended the, um, I'm going to get this wrong, Tony, I don't need the name of the meeting, but, um, so the exit conference with the state auditor's office for the 2021 audit. And I wanted to call out that our finance department, people past and present, got a major shout out in the presentation for basically just being awesome. So we have an awesome finance department and it's recognized by the state auditor's office, so.
Yes, they do, yeah.
It's not shocking.
No, it's not shocking at all, but it's great to hear that it continues.
I love to sit on, in on the audits when it comes back, just to hear the glowing report that our, that our department gets and our city gets.
Yeah, and that was exactly what happened.
I am not accountant, an accountant, my husband will attest to that, but, but, um, it is, it is good to hear all the boxes they check and do such a stellar job. Oh, today is, I'm wearing different socks, everybody noticed, right? They did. It's, uh, it's World Down Syndrome Day.
It was a not matching socks.
Not matching socks. And the reasons why it's on pre-21 is because it's the 21st chromosome has triplicate. So, uh, down, down, I, you know, I, I think of Down Syndrome as kids even though there's plenty of Down Syndrome adults. Uh, but they're a fantastic population and I hope everyone has a Down Syndrome person in their life because they make the world a better place.
Um, I will also, on, i- is it still disability awareness month, generally speaking? Okay, so, uh, cystic fibrosis no longer qualifies for Make-A-Wish because, and that's a good thing.
Right.
Because it's not, uh, it's not a life sentence. Like, people are surviving, there's more, um, more treatment available. And so to get to a point where it's not life-threatening enough, that you no longer have to be considered terminally ill is a huge win.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I remember we would go to the ocean with a group of families every year and there was a boy who had the same was the same age as one of my boys. What did we have? He had muscular dystrophy. And they developed, both Dawson and this little boy were developing at the same time and they go out on the playground, the beach together. And it's in a wheelchair. And then it was just too tough for mom and dad to go to the ocean, you know, with other kids running around. So those families who have kids who have critical health and short lifespans, so that's a big job of the heart to tackle.
Um, I don't know if we, does anybody know if there's anybody in Bothell who's participated in Make-A-Wish?
Can't, I'm thinking like that.
Um, that's one of the things that I, I keep in mind is that, um, life gets lifey and whatever is possible in life happens in our community. Um, and there's a lot of diverse experiences and perspectives that, you know, that people don't choose but kind of show up in their lives and, um, and part of community is just showing up and being there as, as the unexpected happens. Um, and the out of the norm happens. So I think that a lot of what we do here on council is trying to make space for community response, but also, um, like include and welcome people from all their perspectives and experiences as well. So I appreciate the staff for how they, how they do that. Um, and, and how, you know, we're, we're given the opportunity to talk about and make recommendations in that direction too. Just to get a big picture on you.
Yeah. No, I just, I, 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 as you were talking, I was thinking about you know, families who who had, you know, expectations matched, go headlong with reality. And how communities stood with them or failed to stand with them. Um, and I think we talked to people before about part of being human is getting out of our comfort zone and help and coming alongside people, working with them, who needs them extra bolstering below the difficulty. Without sympathy, but just rejoicing that we can do life together. Maybe we're a little harder than we anticipated or went differently.
I think Steve said it really well. Um, like, problems present opportunities.
I was thinking about that, I was like, I really like, so Steve, I caught that too and I thought, hmm. So at home, you tell families, hey, your family, you know, hey, problems present opportunities, I'm going to try to take that home and
My wife's more optimistic than I am.
So she rubs off a little bit.
She probably rubs off.
Yeah.
I wonder if my kids will buy it. Probably not.
Opportunities for trouble, maybe.
That it is, no, there is some truth to that. Um, you know, our, every family that's had, probably had times where they've had to tighten their belt and be more frugal. I have loved to find different creative ways to you know, meet the same needs for the family, but not in the way that was most easiest, maybe we find some, another fun way to do it, so sometimes opportunities are fun. Sometimes they're
Sometimes they're a combination, yeah, sometimes it's complicated.
It's a mixed pack.
Everything's terrible, but you learn from it.
So we don't meet next week, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Fourth chance today.
Be an April.
Have a good rest of your March, y'all. Will be all done? All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
We added 10 minutes early.